Okay, we're recording. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Emergency Medical Services Commission for Tuesday, January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. Time now is five oh two P M. Could we please begin with the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everybody. I guess this evening now is after five. Um, do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Yay. Um, I want to take just a second, just like for the record, to uh welcome our two vice members. All right, the uh the the new chiefs, which is kind of wild having both of you here, but uh really excited to work with you both. Uh they've been working together a long time already. And uh Bill, uh you're you're alleged, so I'm really excited to be in your office.
Yeah, well, it's good stuff. And um, okay, so uh as far as approval of the minutes, um. So we have three of us, so that is a four, I guess, so those of us who are present, um I think that we accept the, basically approve the minutes from October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty four, bring the meeting. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That's a lot of sessions from the chiefs that you aren't here for the meeting. So you guys weren't on board yet. Um, next up, uh in the back uh here, the back page, there is a proposed meeting schedule. Um, what I'd like to do is have a motion to approve that meeting schedule, please.
Go move.
In or the second. It's like, okay, let's say uh same for the special on those dates. I mean, obviously, if something comes up, we have the ability to cancel and do a special, but those will be our regular main dates.
And the um anything jumping out at anybody, so.
Yeah, do you look at a calendar or anything? Is this the first time you've seen it?
That's the first time. That's fine. She said the last Q and A of the month.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. With that, I'll try your minds. All favor of the schedule, please say aye.
Aye.
Any pros? Motion carries. That's the big one we had to cover.
Yeah, that can still be very.
Right? Sitting at the least and running away. Um, okay, so we we put on the uh the agenda here, consideration how a town provides merchant medical services. Um, which you could, the chiefs, you're kind of, I know you've probably been around listening to this as we've got it, but even to the boss chief, I. The history behind this is that we, as a town, and we're providing medical services, we want to make sure we're taking advantage of tons of scale. Right now, we've got two different vendors for both departments doing, you know, the the B L S. We have a different vendor doing A L S. Uh, we're spending a lot of money, you know, they, the end of this was two years ago, uh they gave us a hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase to the uh paramedic portion of the law. So the, that's what we started talking about, is there a way we can do something, whether we all put the uh P S As under one P S A? Do we, do we do memorandum of agreements? And what do we do? Do we do a separate ambulance association? Which, I think all that is like kind of off the table with the exception of doing some sort of agreement. Just that somehow we're all doing this together, we're talking about using the same vendors where we can. Um, and actually looking at all the costs of the program altogether. For the challenge perspective, we know that this is not a uh a a money-making deal. It's how we'll always be paying money for paramedic service or ambulance service or whatever those are. But we just want to make sure that we're doing it as best as possible, everybody's covered. And um and also making sure that I think, as we spoke about it, quality of healthcare is number one. Right, because we've talked about whether we should be doing uh, you know, P L S ambulance or A L S ambulance. We've had all these different conversations. I think we provide probably the best health care response, you know, emergency response, because having the fly car, the situation we have, works. But then there's the renting, isn't it, right? We're we're wondering how many times our paramedics spend time to rent, so that is what this is, it's kind of an ongoing conversation. We have a, we have another agreement coming up this summer with uh New Vans or whoever New Vans will be, I don't know when it will be done. Um, hopefully, we can do something before then, so we can just all, you know, take advantage of uh synergy. So that's the conversation we've been having up to this point, so you gotta kind of get to it. Um, last we spoke, we voted about having, I think, Tom, okay, doing a memorandum of agreement. Have you, have we made any appeal?
Well, we talked about doing an R and P.
An R and P, that's right.
Which I found an old paramedic one, which I started a while ago, but that sidetracked kind of editing it to, so we can at least look at it to put out some type of R and P for that basic ambulance service, right? To see what it would cost for both companies to share a staffing company, whether it's B L S or A L S.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we gotta kind of.
Did we share a P where you could look at both?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, to share staffing services and make an agreement that we kind of operate as, someone has one entity.
Do we need to make those, I know you're concerned. Do we need to move that along by actually paying somebody to put together the R and P? I mean, would that be, is there a particular firm, I think, that we could go to and say, put together the R and P?
It used to be, I don't know, I don't, there's gotta be somebody up there that can do it. There's a couple of people out there that used to do it years ago, I don't know if they're still in the game right now.
Yeah.
If we could do that.
Because I think, I think knowing is gonna be a big part of it.
Yeah.
Any thoughts of you guys, you know, you guys who put this stuff together?
I did.
Yeah, I, yeah, um, yeah, I put a couple of basic numbers together, just in my head, I'm an economics major, so I love these kinds of things. Um, for one point eight million dollars, you could have an A L S bus run twenty-four seven, an A L S bus run twelve hours during the day, and you could have an on-call paramedic. Right, or that would be it. I look at the revenues, I'm not sure what Billy's revenues are downtown, but I know what my revenues are, probably between the two, I'd estimate it'd take a one point one million for that. So you're looking at about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall on this revenue versus, and that's basic.
So say that again, so your revenue, you think your revenue is what?
I know what my revenue is, I don't know what Billy's.
Right.
My revenue's about four fifty, four seventy-five. Um, and a lot of that, I have a, you know, three hundred plus thousand for staffing, ambulance, stuff like that. Um, so the only part that I, I just got access to our billing information yesterday, and I got the budget yesterday.
Yeah.
So I was twitching with numbers today and came up with what I came up with, uh could be twenty percent off. I'm 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 not sure. I'm not entirely certain what the insurance rates would turn out to be if we were running an A L S bus versus an A L S bus. I'm not sure what the supply situation respective of paramedic.
Yeah.
Off needs are all numbers, I don't know. However, when you talk about having somebody come in and look at all of this, I know I'm probably speaking out of turn here because I do work for them, but your town one north of here is your example.
Yeah, the problem is that town one north of there is, they're paying way too much, and they're way too top-heavy in its staff.
They're.
We we looked, we looked at them as we went through this, we have whole discussion.
I understand that, they're top-heavy in staff, but.
Yeah.
The bottom line is, is right now, Stony Hill is relying on four volunteers to cover the town. There's four guys that handle eighty percent of our calls on a volunteer basis. If they suddenly move out of town, get hurt or whatever, Stony Hill's not gonna be viable anymore as far as ambulance service, we can count our bus being there in ten minutes.
We're talking about mainly nighttime ones outside.
Always nighttime, outside.
Yes, it's the double check, yeah.
Yeah, where, I mean, I have, I have all the cool numbers, like I said, it was something Amish major, so I have all these great numbers and stuff, what the percentages are and all that for the calls. But the bottom line is, we rely far too much on a couple of people, and I'm sure downtown is not dissimilar as far as, you know, trying to get ambulances out. We're really, I mean, Doug and I both, we were on the phone with each other at two o'clock in the morning, you know, we're getting out, we have to respond. And the strange thing is, neither Doug nor I live in Bethel. So we're, we're racing over here to to cover calls, and and that's what I signed up for. I don't want to be like that, whining about, I'm up. But we're relying very heavily on a very few volunteers, and even though we tried to, it's like herding cats. We're trying to tell these people, yeah, on paper, I have twenty-five E M Ts, yeah, great. I I can't get them out of the, I can't get them out of bed until, I'm having difficulty signing them up for staffing schedules and things like that. Part of that is A, and I know Doug this far, is the zero incentives.
We're looking for that.
I I understand, so, I mean, I'm just saying where we stand now is a, is a snapshot of today without the incentives, and there's no, we really don't have any health for them for not doing.
So I mean, what, I mean, what are you guys proposing? Are you looking at doing paid night service now too?
I don't know, for to that point, you know, full-time paid night service. My point was, we'd have to combine first.
Okay.
We would have to have the one P S A, whether it's an ambulance association or whether, and I may be speaking completely out, this is something I haven't spoken with Doug or Tommy about, um, whereas Bethel's just based. And they they want it if you want to keep a P S A like that, and they can staff a bus in our our building or whatever, there's a lot of things that go through my head with this, but I've only been doing this for a month now.
Right.
And I'm trying to, to think of, not only next year, but five years and then ten years. In ten years, it's inevitable. Will be a, it'll be a fully staffed, paid staff, twenty-four hours a day, you can have no choice. I mean, it's just what people insist upon, and as our volunteers keep declining year after year after year, um unless there's some sort of influx of people that are willing to do this on a volunteer basis, it's inevitable that that's what it will become. Uh, when I started this in ninety-seven, there wasn't, you know, Denver was paid, Bridgeport was paid, but that was it. We were all volunteers, twenty-four seven. It was great, we covered all the calls. Twenty years later, it's just, it's just different, it's just, I don't know, not that we're lame society or whatever, but we just don't have the people willing to put their hand up and volunteer anymore.
And it's a challenge, I know, yeah.
And and it's not a, I mean, we can talk about incentives and all that, it's not a person, Billy, Doug, myself. I, my reasons are my own as to why I volunteer, Doug's or his abilities are his. Our duty, service, whatever, money means nothing as far as I'm concerned, I'm paid, but I'm still doing it. And that's the way most of our people feel. Obviously, incentives are nice, we'll have that, but we're here for that. That mentality seems to have, does not exist like it did for us. I don't know why that is.
No, I know, it's just, it's it's every word, it's based on.
Exactly, so I'm just trying to figure out a way where I can cover my costs and provide the best service for the town of Bethel for the next year. Look ahead to five years down the road where we're probably gonna be, and then look down the road ten years.
Yeah, but you're not off of what we've been talking about, because I think we've come to this point where.
I don't claim that.
You're a good place, you're good. Um, I mean, because we've talked, that's why we're talking about doing this, R and P to look at what would it be altogether? What would those costs be as we work?
And we, since this commission started, we've been talking about, you know, a fully paid service or, you know, that's how it just started, all volunteers to a park, you know, paid staffing during the daytime because the volunteers went around and, you know, the thought was always at some point, you know, we need to consolidate it and make it one, and because it's a small town and one EMS entity, I think, works, I said that in fact.
I mean, that from the, from the chief's perspective, I mean, what are your thoughts? Are you gonna put it there?
Yeah, I I think to take a couple of steps backwards here and address some of the things you brought up earlier. Um, in terms of the R and P, you know, the question, who can do it? I think that the town file is here in more than kick, I don't think we have to hire somebody. Um, so, uh, you talked about one bid for all three services, I a hundred percent behind that. And I would look at that in a couple of different ways. Um, if we can get the same staffing agency, Bethel, Stony Hill, and the paramedic service, I think we'd get a much better price. Um, some of the uh career ambulances, the private ambulances now, um, have opened up, I think you you'll see an A M R now be available for a bit. Whereas once they weren't, not long ago, they weren't because they, they claimed that they had um too many services in Connecticut, they were down in the youth market, that is a bit dropped. The uh, and then when you do go to bid, um, I would put in a tiered approach to that. Okay, we're gonna give you a contract for three years, but we'll give you the option to renew it for another two years and get five-year care for, say, uh, you know, if the prices are right here, you'd be looking at a solid five-year contract. I don't know, any business would not look that hard. Um, in terms of the money, you're you're pretty darn close on it, between the two is one point one, I think you're right on the money, all right? But with that being said, we gotta talk about collections, all right? We could be in very good shape if our collections are better. We have delinquency that will knock your stocks off. Um, for a couple of reasons, people that are not insured, uh, people that are, have limited insurance, people that have seriously high deductible, cold pays, things like that, where you get what you can from them and then, you know, the remaining funds really put it down in your service. So we have a very large debt collection, um, you know, six figures.
Does your billing company?
Billing company is the best thing around, um, but still, it's difficult to collect. Um, how aggressive we want to get with that is always been a debatable point. You know, we could go after people who can catch things, stuff like that, I don't know if we want to do that, you know? Um, they're pretty aggressive now, but uh if if you want to get to the point where you're going to have to seriously bill our accounts, you could do that, you know, I don't know what your pledge will rate would be. Probably a third, you'd get it, you know, the third, or probably just that means you're never gonna get it. But lastly, um, I think we have to look at it, how did we get to this point today? We're doing unbelievable numbers, you know, we're doing well over two thousand, probably twenty-five hundred calls between the two of us, three thousand? We did one thousand seven hundred thirty-two.
We did thirteen hundred.
Okay, so three thousand calls.
Yeah, three thousand.
And you have between the fire, we do another thousand, four thousand, and I mentioned that this morning. Um, what we have to look at, I think, is gonna maybe slow this this unbelievable elephant in the room. So the agencies that, the groups that move into town really dominate our services, and and the big ones are our elderly complexes, you know, whether it's, I mean, this be funded, government be funded, or it's private, they're killing us. So I think that it, I think it's fair to look at them to uh to try to uh pick up a piece of the pie. Um, you know, it's tough, I remember when Federal Ridge first opened up, these are the people on the security force who were also E M Ts. Staffed in was at Georgetown, if they didn't get a second E M T, that kind of went down to two of us pretty quick within a year or two. But it made a difference for a while. Um, I don't know if you can get people to make that commitment now, but when you're banging on calls day and night to make ones, you know, Bethel Healthcare, um, the Pacific Tire, Reynolds Ridge, places like that, um, dogs are really are bang, one, two, three, four places. If we can address that somehow and reduce the number of calls, it will reduce our uh our commitment to having our career service there today. Kind of, you know, reduce the number of calls or stabilize our cost band right now, I think it's gonna make a big difference. But I'll get back now to what I said earlier, is I think if we could go to bid, get a competitive bid for all three agencies, paramedics, Stony Hill, Bethel, I think that we'll do pretty good. And uh, and then maybe uh we could also talk about using the same collection, see if that would help. But I think to make it effective, I would not have a problem with uh some level of intervention by the uh, by the town to help us with that. Um, and I'll close by saying that um, consolidation is a third service here. For me, it's gonna probably be a tough sell, but we talk about it. It's not a closed-door thing, we talk about it, but right now, for the most part, we got a lot of guys hanging around the fire ops, not the kids, they're getting the wagons out the door with exception. I had that call the other night, that guy who jumped on it the other night, people took the kid, put him in a car, drove him to the hospital, that broke my heart. Now I, it happens every once in a while. Um, and then the last but not least two, and again, I'm sorry, I was gonna say one, two things. You know, we gotta talk about guys, it's another elephant in the room. We can't send three ambulances to Danbury at the same time. We did it the other night, I'm telling you, it's fire sheet, it's gotta stop. Two ambulances stops, we gotta keep one in town. I mean, it's been, people here are paying for that service. So the other night, when when they can't staff over there, I get it. Hey, if a school bus flips over, a train wreck or something like that, I say send every fire truck, get ambulance over there, every E M D and M R P we have. But, but the other night, they banged us, bang, one, two, three ambulances, city of Danbury, we had nothing left there except first responders. That's gotta stop. Ambulance from Stony Hill, ambulance from Bethel, thirty ambulance states back in town, because we're just supposed to take care of the Bethel citizens. And I think we have to look at that. We're we're doing a ton of mutual aid, and not only on the E M S side, fireside, people know they could call the town in Bethel and get a fire truck right away. And there's not twenty towns around that can do that. I think you guys will agree to that.
Yeah.
The other day, you know, we go to Brookfield one night, except in all our hometowns, because we get out, you know? Not everybody's getting out anymore, we'll fire EMS. So, you know, those are my, it's my two cents of service conversation, so.
You mentioned something a minute ago about the town helping out on something I I didn't quite get with you.
That that aspect would be on, coming up with guidelines for collections and delinquency on the outstanding accounts. If we could set up uh some type of guidelines for how far would we go to collect the delinquent accounts? Um, we don't want to embarrass the community, we're, we mean the Bethel Fire Department, we don't embarrass the fire department, you don't want to embarrass our citizens by, you know, putting them into some type of aggressive collection. When maybe they just don't have insurance, or maybe there's an economic situation there, or something, maybe there's a long-term medical, die to cancer, get a plus, you know, and and they don't have the cash to pay the damage, so. We get that, but I think there's other areas that we could pull in some cash.
Yeah.
Listen, we're we're well over a hundred thousand dollars in delinquencies, it's gotta stop. Uh, so maybe that represents twenty percent of the total billing, but I hope this is our, I I wouldn't survive if I had twenty percent debt on my books, I'd be out of business. Right, and we're, we're knocking at that door. So if we all came to an agreement on how aggressive we would go on the delinquent accounts, um, and agreed to that, both within the volunteer units and the town, um, so nobody gets hurt, but yet we know where our limits are, that's what I meant about town of value. What do you comfort with as the first placement? I don't want you to get twenty-four calls a day, say, we can build the town, just send me, I'll bill again, this is the third time now, we don't have the money, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah.
So just, so hold on, listen to this.
Yeah, it's a mutually call, so.
Yeah.
Let's stick to the point, that can be easily fixed by having a conversation with our dispatch center and setting up a policy about mutually calls.
Yeah.
And that only two at a time are allowed to go out of town.
I didn't want to.
That's an easy fix.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
That's an easy fix, I mean, and I, it's a valid point, you're right, you know, and it's not just Danbury, it's any town, if it's Newtown or anybody's around it, unless it is like a mass casualty, but.
And that's, you gotta go.
That can be easily fixed.
But with having then, with having three ambulances on shift, right? If we end up doing, you know, paid twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven paid, right? We go out and say, that's what we're gonna do. Then are we using that third ambulance as, you know, volunteer, or what's, what's the plan?
Volunteer, I'll lose staff, I mean.
Staff the third volunteer.
I can hear your original part.
I was just asking, because, you know, I did, we we have agreed somewhat that we want to keep volunteers and volunteer E M Ts in the mix.
Oh.
And that's, frankly, that's the nighttime coverage. But if that's, if we're getting to a point now where we're not turning them out at night, it's a concern, if we're looking at paid at night, then how do we integrate the E M Ts?
Well, I think our call volume, you could, you could staff with the thirty ambulance of volunteers during the day. I mean, if you had the volunteers, you could, they could stay busy during the day as a third ambulance, right?
You could.
Not every day, fire comes and goes, but you could definitely.
We're almost to the point of having a fourth ambulance.
Yeah, there are times where all three are out.
We did sixteen, we did sixteen calls yesterday, I think I counted, just the eighty-dollar hearing.
Right.
And we had a public delay. So right there, alone, you you could have easily used four ambulances, and there's multiple days during the week that are like that.
With respect to the uh.
I can verify what you said there.
Yeah.
All right, um, we, we, on a second call during the day, we have a second ambulance, it's gotta be staffed like volunteers. How are we forgetting out? Probably eighty percent of the time, ninety percent, eighty percent is probably accurate, although I can't verify that without the figures, and this can roll over Stony Hill.
Well, they have it set up now, which is the way that it should be, is that any A L S call, it's automatically told.
It's a second call right off.
Stony Hill and Bethel, which works the way that it should work.
Exactly.
And then if Bethel gets a uh, guys together, they cancel Stony Hill, which is fine.
But we also, Doug, we've gotten more aggressive about doing first responders, so you're running out the door with the wagon over there, the pickup truck, and you're hitting those uh, those extra calls over here till we get an ambulance, which is a great way to do business. But just to clarify, we say, second ambulance calls during the day, um downtown, you know, we try to get a volunteer group, we don't take up. Third call happens all the time, that's gotta be a volunteer group, and hopefully we get out. If it's a Stony Hill call, he's going with first responders, the second ambulance here is trying to get staffed, and go nights, weekends, holidays, volunteer. It's not, you know, that's what we're doing. So it's not, it's really just that daytime hours are on primary response, where they clear staff.
I know that's the way it is now, the question is, are we having a problem getting people out at night?
As long as my four guys keep volunteering, we'll, which is, ambulance out at night, but all it takes is one or two of them to, you know, leave town or decide they're not gonna do it anymore.
Right.
We're gonna be hurt unless we get, you know, it always seems to work out, you got a guy who's a a super responder, he fades away and here comes the next guy. I mean.
Yeah.
It's just eventually the next guy is gonna show up.
Well, it seems like, so the numbers, when we talked about the numbers earlier, this was last year, we talked about the numbers, um. Downtown, you know, Bethel Fire Department was, was breaking even on, you know, ambulance calls and everything, like we weren't losing money on it. Stony Hill was in a hole, because ideally, because you were going to Bethel Health for all time, you guys were on ten.
Yeah, I mean.
But you've made that up now, right? The kind of, you're staying afloat again with ambulance?
We're staying afloat with one ambulance, assuming, you know.
Right.
Up to here, hoping nobody makes.
Right, well, then the question is, I think, you know, Tim O'Leary's brought up, are are we ready for a fourth ambulance, and would that be?
Yeah, I can entertain that idea, yeah, let's just stick with the. I think trying to, and to totally go with what Billy's saying about these, you know, elder care facilities. I had nine hundred and four billable calls, we did thirteen hundred calls, but until H R, I don't know, seven, six, eight, nine, nine, or whatever it is that'll let us bill Medicare for lymphocystis, which is still pending in Congress.
Okay.
That's gonna help us a lot, because.
A lot.
Lymphocystis, plus, it it originally, the the law is for the exact call we had at Bethel Healthcare, we rolled into Bethel Healthcare the other day, person's unresponsive. We're using A E D pads, uh, we're pushing epinephrine, we're putting, we're tubing the person, we're doing all this, we lost them, stays in place. A M R would have transported that person because now they can bill for it. We can't bill if we don't transport, under the law right now.
A M R, A M R can do it, you can't.
Well, A M R doesn't because they just dump the body off at the hospital and they're like, give us our money, and the hospital's like, why are you transporting me a corpse?
Gotcha.
But A M R knows that we're gonna get our nineteen hundred dollars to transport the person, whereas where, until this H R passes, um, we don't transport, we're not rules, we're not gonna run a body in just to get our money. But the corollary to that law will be also Medicare will pay us for our lymphocystis when we go to Bethel Healthcare, because they left the guy on the bathroom floor for three hours. And now we show up and we put him back in the bed and take a set of vitals, I'm fine, I'm good, here's my refusal form, and off we go. We don't get a thing for that. Legally, we can get two hundred and sixty-eight dollars for lymphocystis from a commercial service, which, you know, we try to get, but out of my nine hundred and four calls, seven hundred and five Medicare Medicaid calls. And as Billy said, I'm getting forty cents, thirty-five cents on the dollar for my calls, right? Medicare right now pays us five hundred and eleven dollars for an A L S call, it's, you know, a twelve hundred dollar, a nineteen hundred dollar call, maybe even a year-long ship. And it's, that part is, so not only are we not getting the collections, and I could not support more of both of us having the same collection agency.
Yeah, I've heard that, and billing agency, right?
Right, yeah. If it, if it was the same, then, you know, you're not wise, quick man.
So kind of going back around kind of where we started, um, we we need to get this moving, to get an actual R and P out there to, to look at these, like have. So kind of back around to where we started, um, we need to get this moving to get an actual R P out there to, to look at these, like have somebody give us the information. Do we, do we want to get a, I, I mentioned getting a third party to get it moving, I mean, Tom is incredibly busy, obviously.
We have to pay him, right?
We could have to pay somebody, yes.
But, but I'm, I'm sorry, isn't, can it be decided among the chiefs or our board of directors? To get the same billing company and to get the same staffing company? I don't think that needs to go.
I don't think that town has anything to do with it.
No, it doesn't, we were, we were doing this, remember, agreement, we were making an agreement. That we would all look at it together and look at, look at the same thing with paramedic and say, how much is it? Like, put, put the numbers out there, like.
Is that something you can handle, Rick, putting that all together? As far as.
Listen, we want, we want, listen, there's only so many people out there, right? If we want a proposal that, that basically says, okay, what, what is it for day, both departments? What is it for day and night? Right? Um, what is it with, with an ALS bus? How would that affect us?
Yeah, there's, there's only so many staffing companies that actually provide an ALS. Right, we may not be able to.
Part of it too may just be, we just do ALS. You know, we can still do separate, we can still maintain new vans for our paramedic, there's a lot of great things about it. But problem making sure that we're looking at this holistically about what we're bringing in. Now, listen, this used to be a thing where you guys would just make money on it, you'd fund the ambulance and all that too. Fine, that's the way it's gonna stay. But we're gonna, you know, for the town's perspective, look at how much we pay for the paramedic. It's difficult, we don't get much billing back for that, we just get the difference between what a ALS, our bills will be in ALS, that's not.
I, I saw those numbers.
Yeah, that's a problem.
We don't nearly give you back.
No. So that, and that's why we have to look, I mean, for me, as a fiduciary for the town, I have to say, well, where, where is the best way for the town to get his bag for the bug, to deliver their medical scans, that's what, that's what it's all about. Right? I, I like that it's volunteer, I love that we have that part of the community, but the truth of the matter is, I gotta figure out how we work together. And, and listen, maybe somebody in the town's buying the ambulances, I don't know. It's gonna be hard for you guys to buy ambulances in the future as well.
The town, the town, right, the town of Bethel is responsible for providing EMS services, however they do it.
Yeah.
And right now, the town of Bethel is doing it for a very reasonable cost by just paying for the paramedic. Living in two volunteer houses.
Yeah.
Handle the rest. But I think we're all at the point where it's difficult to get volunteers, it's difficult, you know, there's a lot of overlap, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Or, you know, managing two billing and everything where with one PSA or one agreement, something where we're all using the same resource. I think I'll just streamline it and hopefully bring in some of that additional revenue, including like a paramedic side. Or does going to ALS route and creating an ALS service on the ambulance, does that increase revenue and cut costs up? But I think that's kind of the bad numbers.
I have a question, Ricky, did you get, um, you have a rough idea, think of how many Medicare, the ALS calls are? Yeah, it's about, it worked out to about forty percent of our calls. Turned out to be ALS, the rest of the ALS. Rough idea what your income is on that? I, I don't, so. My, my income from Medicare Medicaid is around two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Okay. Which represents. How do you, how do you survive on that? I rely on four guys to break their butt to go. No, I meant the, what's the money side of that coin? Billy, like I said, we, we're up to here and it's, it's by not putting money into a, a capital fund like we should be for a new ambulance. I mean, we are, but I don't think we're on schedule, like, there's a lot of things that we're cutting back on to make it so we can survive. And we are surviving, I mean, we do have, I, looking at the numbers, we're not great, but like you said, if we got that, that HR passes and suddenly my one hundred lithocysts at Bethel Healthcare, I can bill for them. Two sixty-eight, so I get my forty cents on the dollar, so I get a hundred and twenty dollars. That, that kind of is, with that type, we're twelve thousand dollars in billing and maybe getting a couple of bucks back if we do a little harder billing, um, with our company or we combine the company, now all of a sudden, I got twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand, and I go from being here to being A, you know what?
Yeah, but this started last, last ten, year before, is when this started. Uh, when this conversation started, you guys were ten thousand dollars in the hole. So I'm sitting here going, wow, how do we deliver a service if I got one? And by the way, the fire department now is asking us to make them whole. If the town paid the fire department to get back in the, the black, right? That's what, we were talking to Stony Hill, you guys were ten thousand dollars in the hole. And we were gonna, they were gonna say, hey, town, you gotta make us whole. And I looked at it, whoa, whoa, like, i- if we were all somehow combined, then the money would be everywhere. It would be, oh, Bethel's flush, and you guys are sinking like a stone. Meanwhile, we're not getting the best, you know, response for our folks out there. I can't just turn around and it should be paying extra for Stony Hill, right? What Bethel, is there any money? Because you've got a different demographic. That's kind of what started driving this whole conversation, right?
And it's, it's, I have ninety calls last year that I billed in, uh, commercial insurance companies. Ninety out of nine hundred and four where I actually saw my money.
Yeah, and that, and that's, and that's part of this problem, because unless we figure out. You know, as a town, that, that, that's not sustainable. And that's, that's my concern, this is, what we are doing right now is unsustainable. But, but, so I don't know how to fix it.
It's, it's not gonna be sustainable when it comes to medicine service either. Well, I mean, we're telling you here that especially Stony Hill, healthcare facilities, regardless of who's billing, whoever runs the service, the results are gonna be the same, we don't have access to good funds. Well, no matter how good our collection is, you're, you're billing Medicare and getting nothing. Let's say you pick up those hundred lithocysts and you get them all, right? So, um, two hundred and fifty, uh, you know, so you're not even making up the difference on what you might get out of a commercial service carrier on your Medicare. You know, it's not even close. All right, understood, but I'm, I'm grabbing every scrap I can. No, I, I know it, but I'm, I'm trying to make a point, you're absolutely correct. This is, uh, this is tough. Um, so I, I, you know, just. We're also surviving on donations.
Sure.
Okay, we, we had a substantial donation recently, a couple months ago. And brought up on the floor, and there was no question that every dime of that was going into the new ambulance fund. You know, I wanted a piece of it, I wanted to get some firepower, but it's a company, but no, we're gonna, it's going in the ambulance fund because that's what we need to do. And, you know, it, it grounded me, but I understand it, but. I, I would have nice to split that fifty-fifty between the fire and ambulance.
Well, you, you guys are doing great, you've got seventy-five percent of the town, you don't have the same demographic that they have. They got twenty-five percent and they, they're, they're shouldering all those other folks that they're not getting paid for at Stony Hill. And this, this inherently has been a long-term kind of issue with the fire departments, right? So when it comes to ambulance now, we either work together somehow, because either we all work together as one kind of unit and, and share the wealth for you guys. Because if that doesn't happen, then now I have to what? Look at, you know, basically subsidizing the twenty-five percent of the town, because you guys, you guys are making money. I, this, I understand if we don't look at it as business, but I'm gonna look for a business relationship. Do you understand?
Absolutely.
We're in this particular, we, I, all I need is the best quality emergency service for my residents at the best. But I'm gonna turn around and I'm gonna start giving them twenty grand a year. But you guys are doing great and we're all, well then, guess what, we're gonna, we're gonna change the domain, we're gonna change the PSAs in town.
I wanna do, but I wanna clarify that this demographic thing is, our, when I talked about the collections, I threw out six figures, it's not, it's not like a really low six figures, it's, it's a lot. And, um, so you may be doing less calls and you're getting lousy funding from Medicare. But the good thing about Medicare is you're, you're always gonna get something, right? Yeah, I am gonna do something, but also to jump back into seventy-five, twenty-five, we're doing forty-four percent of the ambulance calls, right? Maybe we're only twenty-five percent of the town area-wise, but we're forty-four percent of your medical calls. So for our call, and so we're pretty, you know, we're almost, we're not quite fifty-fifty, but it's getting there for ambulance. So geography notwithstanding, we're getting pretty close to call.
Yeah.
You could have a day here and we don't roll, and Stony Hill rolls all day. Just Bethel Healthcare.
Yeah.
Look, I tried, I, I tried to cool it, now that I'm EMS director or whatever over there, and I walk by that day room and I see that staffing crew in there playing Nintendo or whatever, I wanna, wanna call myself. And I wanna, and now I don't wanna see any R M As, I don't wanna, you know, I used, when I was the EMT, I'm like, oh, good, I wanna take an RMA here, so I go back home. Now I'm like, take them all, everybody goes, I'm becoming AMR. So, and I don't wanna be that guy, but now I'm a pencil pusher, so now I'm trying to, to make it a profitable. Not so profitable, but at least survive.
When we started this a couple years ago, little bit summer twenty-three, we were looking at all this doing together, memorandums, agreement, and coming up with a way that somehow we all put in a woodpile. Um, I'm feeling like that, maybe we wanna change directions, like, like, what are we?
I think we, we've already opened that part of this, Doug said earlier, that, uh, when we get that second ALS call, we're banging out both departments on first call. Or we bring to a third call, to see if like we got a crew or he got a crew, whatever. Now it's automatic, both departments being told out. And whoever crap it takes it goes, that's maintaining a higher level of community service. Um, and if there's anybody's gonna benefit by that financially, it's gonna be Stony Hill, because they're picking up their second call, but it's not a lot of calls. Um, I didn't realize it was that close, and I knew it was up there, but being forty-four percent and that would make us fifty-six percent, you know? Yeah, that's close.
In divorce court, that's even. When you go back to, you know, if you go back to Bethel Healthcare, all those calls and that collecting, right? So years ago, we had an agreement with Danbury Ambulance that for non-emergent calls, they would take them. Because at the time, we were all, we're doing it as volunteers, I remember going there, working in the town during the day sometimes, to go on an ambulance call, Bethel Healthcare. So for a while, a private ambulance company was taking non-emergence. But then it, it started getting out of control where they were doing everything and we weren't going in at all. So then that's when it got away where any medical issue is there. So you go back and say, okay, did we look at that and revise that protocol again and, and talk with Bethel Healthcare about that? But doing that, then now what are you doing? You're dropping an amount of calls, right? You're still paying for that staffing probably during the day, you're not gonna get rid of them. And how you're taking, having them go to less calls, you know what I mean? So it's like, you kind of wanna do something because you don't wanna, so it's, yeah, it's that balance.
We, we figured, um, that between the staffing calls and the volunteer calls, it's almost fifty-fifty. Yeah, it's damn close. Um, we were like eight hundred and forty of the seventeen hundred were volunteer calls. And the other, just a lesser number, handled by the staffing agency during the day. So fifty percent of that seventeen hundred and thirty-two, seventeen hundred and thirty-five calls, we're pretty much fifty-fifty between, you know, our, our career staff and the volunteers. Um, but that's a big number.
Yeah, I just think staffing would, going like Dan said, back to just keeping the way things are, but using the same vendors. Right, I just think that helps us as far as staffing issues, somebody calls out or, you know, cross-training, they can, you know, one staffing in Bethel today, they might staff in Stony Hill, and that's the way it used to be, right? With, with the original company, it was one company that did everything. So that, I think, takes a little burden off of guys like Rick, the, you know, volunteer EMS directors and the volunteer fire chiefs. Of, you know, that's a whole aspect of too, the management thing, we, we do have to do, I've done in the past, as volunteers, is he looks to manage this, this operation as well. So maybe that will help with the management part of it and, and the billing part of it, using the same company and sharing resources. And maybe get us to do a little more, we're getting a little better on cross-staffing, you know, ambulances.
But the other thing is, we did talk about, yeah, is the fact that our, our vendors, our, our career staff regularly can't provide us with staff during the day, a full staff. They'll call and say, we can't get a second person, so we gotta struggle to find a volunteer during the day to cope.
Do we have a better vendor to go to? Pardon? Do we have a better vendor that we could go to?
I think it's kind of across the board.
It's, it's, it's the industry, it's the EMS industry.
You, uh, and probably what I was yelling and screaming about earlier, about the three ambulance go to Danbury's. Danbury's probably not staffing a, a third or a fourth ambulance, because they can't get a crew, there's nobody to work. And listen to the Waterbury calls, it's even worse over there. My, my son's on the EMS commission all the time. He says, Dad, you cannot believe how much mutual aid we can buy out of the ambulance. He said primarily going Waterbury. He said, but we had a call the other day, he said, we went to Banza for an ambulance call, they couldn't get anybody in the main time. They go to Thomas, then they go to Watertown, Woket, Cheshire. I mean, it's, it's not just here in Bethel, it's all over the place. But my point being is that a lot of these staffing agencies are having difficulty meeting their contractual obligations. Getting two people or four people, whatever, and it's starting to become a semi-regime down there.
So how do we, how do we solve for that?
We, we solve for it by starting to penalize our staffing company for doing that. And now they've come up, I mean, they've, they've missed one shift since I've been here. It's not a big deal, it's not a huge thing, but we dealt with it back in, when I first started in twenty-two, I was staffing more than the staffing company was.
Yeah.
Because they were terrible, but then, you know, they got spoken to by a board of directors and, you know, they knocked down. I don't, I know you've been tech and I know they're, you know, like a heartbeat. Fortunately, ERM has, well, you know, cathos as a side influence, so. You bring up a good point there, too, Rick, and it's about, you know, cracking down on these. Um, the, the issue also was the quality, the employee, you know, if we, hey, you know, there's the third big elephant in the hole. You know, we, we have people that are just not accepting. And we'll tell the vendor. I call them the COVID crew, where they, they got their EMT on Zoom. And they never put a blood pressure cuff on someone. They have no idea how to talk to people and they don't, and some of them turn up on them. But some of them just, it, it's, it's an old argument that probably Billy and I have had since the nineties, not everybody can do the job. You know, it takes a certain, to be a firefighter, cop, EMT, whatever. And some of these people just shouldn't be doing it, and they took it as a, hey, that might be fun. I'll take an online course or whatever, and EMT, and we then have to weed them out. And I'm dealing with it right now, where I gotta get rid of two people from the staffing company, but I don't wanna micromanage the staffing company, it's not my job. My job is to provide the service for Stony Hill, it's not to micromanage a staffing company and telling them what their employees need to do. And I, I shouldn't have to have them. They should send me a professional that knows what they're doing. But Billy said it don't work that way.
It's a better, better reason, that's why they started, I mean, one, one of the steps was to see if we could find one staffing company, one billing company that would possibly handle these things and make it easier for everybody.
I think that is such a step in the right direction.
And we, and we voted on that in the last commission, that was the plan. So to, to that end, um, like, we could, we could, obviously, if you wanna go look for, I, the R P, right?
I think we can put a little committee together and do that together, I, I like.
What about Tom?
I think it has to be done together with all departments in the membership, because this is gonna have to go to the membership. I make a decision or Tommy makes a decision or Rick. If I'm right, Tommy, that would have to go to the board of directors.
You know, it depends on how you read the EMS commission ordinance and what, what this commission has the authority to do, so, you know, I don't know.
This, this commission has the authority to come up with something. Okay. But if you guys, if we could get it done, now whether you guys agree to do it at the end, that's gonna be up to you guys, right?
If Rick can handle doing it, I'm, I'm on board, Rick, doing it with, with.
And we just run, put something together, run it by Tom? Sure. So we can, you know, do a proposal and find out from a couple of companies out there.
Yeah, well, I think backed by this mission, just to make sure we're all on board, you know, I think we, we, the AMAC Bowl too.
Yeah, I would, I would bring her up, so I would, yeah, I mean, I would love the, the backing of the board, so when I call somebody, I'm not like, hey, I'm getting the guy from Stony Hill. But, but I, I would like it to be a joint feature.
Oh, definitely.
Can I bring up one other thing that we might mark?
Before you do that, uh, is it around this top topic?
Absolutely.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right. One thing that we did not talk about, and what you and I did, is. All right. One thing that we did not talk about, and what you and I did, is, uh, looking down the road very, very soon. Is a potential for regionalization. You know, we're talking about, you know, two fire companies here in town. I think the term used earlier was the economies of scale. You know, that might be something that we have to start looking at. We might be successful if if we can regionalize some of the services. Obviously, we do do paramedic, but on a BLS level, there might be something out there we can do. That's gonna help us stabilize at least all. And, uh, you know.
They all know that's kind of a scary word now, Stone Hill, because of their demographic, basically, right? You guys are. You got two ambulances and you're good.
Good right now, but that's not gonna, may not last forever. We just talked about staffing agencies that aren't up to snuff. I got rid of two people in the last couple of weeks. That was hard to do, but we had no choice. There were serious issues. And and then they couldn't fill the fill the gap. So we we were down on one birthday for a couple of days. I don't know. I was saving for a couple of weeks, so, but like I'm saying, it's. Time's up to regionalization somewhere. So.
Okay, so I think we've left it. It's still, we've already set up for the commission before that we're gonna do our fees. That's already been voted on. It's the plan. So you run with it.
I will run like they.
Consult them as far as, you know, now you guys gonna have, you know, uh, make sure you're looking for the same things. Right? And then, uh, you know, follow up with Tom if you can, make sure regarding how the ALS works. You know, if we're looking at BLS, then possibly ALS, BLS together at one. See what's out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm personally, I'm personally, I like having an ambulance bus or having an EMT. Taking a fly car spray and all that, but. And I don't know, maybe I'm speaking out of school here, but I writing.
Maybe. A lot of that comes into that what how that affected us to make what's comfortable with, right?
I I don't.
Supposed to be a little bit of a deal because of writing pays two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to advance. Right? Anyway, yeah, they pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I writing.
They pay a little bit towards a paramedic car. It's like, whatever, we get the car, we have repairs, things like that. So that is happening. But that that also means that we're spending, what, seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars for, you know, between the two of us. For just the ALS, for the two communities.
It's a serious number.
It's a serious number. And then I I'd have to back you see wherever reimbursement is, but you know. You guys are taking the the biggest chunk of the BLS. We're just getting the difference between the two. It's not a lot. Again, I know the town's gonna pay money and to Tom's point, this may be a. A benefit, but but also if we were to do something like they do in Brookfield, right? I don't know what that number would be. Like, looking at Brookfield, they have the weight to top heavy. And their and their revenues are not nearly covering anything. We we still wanna be competitive with whatever, like if the town turned around and did, said, alright, we're doing, we're doing our own thing. Iron, we're doing whatever, we're gonna have ambulances, what works. Yeah, how how much are we spending at the end of the day? What's revenues? What's collections? Because I don't really wanna be in the business of running an ambulance company. Don't. It's like, it's probably a police department. I'd rather do it the way you do. I think it's better. Well, could do that someday.
I mean, Brookfield is.
Brookfield run by the fire.
Fire company.
Yeah, basically, the town's paying, paying.
Look, look what happened in New York last year when they decided to go twenty-four seven overnight. It went from like three hundred seventy-five, four hundred thousand to over a million dollars overnight.
Yeah, but yeah, but then of course, it is just starting to make sure we're we're delivering. My my biggest worry at night is that all of a sudden, you know, the stones get out or the lockers don't get out. And we done it and I worry about Stone Hill because we may have to turn around itself so I, so we have. That may be what the town has to do to figure out how this works because you guys are doing fine. Stone Hill's having challenges.
The fire company's gonna continue to buy two ambulances and stuff like.
Yeah.
Every spare dime is going to that.
Well, and that was a discussion point too. Maybe at some point, right? If we kinda keep the way things are, but maybe. At some point, the town contributes somewhat towards the vehicles, right? So that's a little more buy-in from them. But it's not a massive burden on the town to. Have the cost of an ambulance or something else.
Not this year. This year can't afford pay attention.
Yeah, yeah, we've been sitting here. Already having a several words tonight.
I like that idea. I think I think that what Tom instituted with you all. You complimented and it's worked out and I commend you all for that. So that that shared service to the calls to the dispatch, who helps to you all. And then, uh, you're working to move towards, and thank you for doing that effort for the staffing and billing, right? For shared services and resources.
Yeah, man, that's been the first step, I think.
I have, I I, you know, I. I I felt bad when we discussed this a year and a half ago that. There isn't a way that the facilities have to carry some weight for what they in their calls. Bethel Healthcare Maplewood, but it didn't seem like there's anything from the, uh, state of Connecticut's model that we could touch. How it didn't look like that. And then I, the only other thing is like our social services, we started a donate to camp. And as the sustainability commission keeps doing great things, maybe there'll be like a. A little fund that if somebody wanted to donate to the, um, transport, the EMS transportation fund they call. Like if it was there, sometimes people may make a decision that that's what they'd like to do. It's on our website, just down the road. Sometimes they don't realize the family. If you picked up my mom from Bethel Healthcare and you treated her well. And my my family would figure out was still awful like that. We probably, if we saw that don't, you could donate here. Even though she was in Bethel Healthcare, we probably would go on that site and wanna send that's our like a little thank you. So that's down the road, but that would be kinda neat if there was like a chart and you can see people's donations. Yeah, so that was.
Um, well, I mean, I think, um, we kind of exhausted that option. Um, if it, I don't think we have anything to offer, because we'll bring the town council to hang out for this whole business.
Uh, yeah, I mean, just to, I think, bring these, uh, the two chiefs up to speed, right? So. And just to reiterate, we have the EMS plan that's due. So I've reset the the basic contract that we need to get signed by the two fire companies. And the EMS plan, the state of Connecticut EMS plan that we, the town has to have, it talks about mutual aid agreements. But their their cookie cutter or their sample agreement isn't the type of mutual aid that we know of, right? We think a mutual aid is the city damage on about ambulances, so they call us for any ambulance. Or we we, all three of our ambulances are on call. We need a fourth ambulance now for a basic call. That's mutual aid. The state of Connecticut, oh, EMS mutual aid is a mass casualty type incident or a natural disaster that they consider mutual aid. That's what their agreement. Pretty much says. So I don't know if they would not accept our agreements or whether they will even. Worry about what our agreements say, but I think it's part, at some point, we need to get some mutual aid agreements with. The area town, Brookfield, Newtown, writing in Bethel, Danbury. Just that that basic thing is we will provide an ambulance for these reasons or, you know, at these hours or, you know. If two of our ambulances are already out of town, we cannot provide it there. So I think we. That's something, again, we should do as a collective group so that the agreements we have are with each town are the same. And they're kinda okay by this commission and then through the fire departments and stuff. So I know Melanie was working on some of that. Yeah, and there were some old agreements that didn't have a lot of, like, there's a lot of language missing about HIPAA and, you know, workers' comp, things like that, like what happens if. You get injured in another town.
But what happens with with the mutual aid agreement? Like, do you have a mutual aid with Newtown? Because I know they sent us.
We had one years ago.
They just resented it to us and it's to us. And I don't understand why it's not to Bethel.
Because you, the Stony Hill, your fire company owns, is the PSA, they're the EMS provider.
So you. Newtown or what?
Yeah, the the thing that always gets me about this, so the town is the one that's on the hook for a liability.
Yeah, but, right, the town, right, the two, again, the contract that is. Outdated and needs to get resigned as part of the EMS plan says that the two volunteer fire companies will provide EMS service. And the town will get some information about billing and collections, you know, different information. But they provide the service, the BLS ambulances. So then if Stony Hill wants to. Let another town use their ambulance, right, provide mutual aid, that should be the company that the fire company. Signs that agreement. But I think this commission should at least say, okay, that sounds agreeable. That sounds good. Yeah, so I I know the predecessor sitting here wanted the town attorney to look at it. I, you know, if they could do that, that's fine, but.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's.
Yeah, they.
Correct.
I mean, that's my. Versus having their attorney look at it.
Right.
I don't think they have.
And there's, you know, and it's.
Who's an attorney?
We have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, when we launched the.
You need an attorney and a doctor, right? There you go. Okay, anyway. So as far as those agreements go. Top's point, you know your agreements, you shared with the town attorney before. I know they're still kinda gummed up in that world. You guys wanna do your own thing and work with an attorney.
So would be appropriate if we were to use the services of the town attorney.
It's fine, but it just, it's taking a while. I can go back and see what.
I understand.
Which he hasn't.
We'd be in charge for that.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, we, but yeah, we've been okay with that. I mean, let me let me check with her. How's that? And then.
We have, we have a couple of things that we, that was the case.
Well, see, that's the thing too. It's like. Where do we draw the line?
Yeah, it's it's all administrative thing, but.
Okay, um, off of the attorney. All right, let me check the back page.
Ask more question to Tommy, in particular, through Dan, through the chair. There was a letter sent out, dispatched the form from, uh, Mr. Kazvekia. Stating that if we were to request a mutual aid paramedic. Beyond where our contract says, there was gonna be a fire alarm in charge. All right. As far as I know, we never signed that contract at Bethel. Did you guys sign it over there?
I don't think we did. That's the same contract that's been in effect, I guess, for some period of time. I think we're talking about forcing it.
They sent, oh, they actually sent a contract out.
At last I heard you guys were gonna go to Brookfield.
We decided that, you know, we weren't gonna sign until you got more information, wanted to sit down with them, et cetera. Because we thought that it was a, like the other night, you got three buses over there. We're not asking you for any extra money, you know? Now you're asking us for five hundred, you know, paramedic. It it just didn't sit well, you know? So we never signed it. You didn't either, no. Okay, good. We're on the same page there.
No, I don't think we're.
No, I don't think we are either. I can almost tell you.
Was that five hundred?
Five hundred dollars a call, yeah. And our our friends, you know, to the east here, thought it was the best thing since sliced bread. Also, their interpretation, what I was told was that this was a contract now that was enforceable. They had to set up a medic now. And they didn't mind paying the five hundred, five hundred extra because they were picking up on the building. So this kinda got them off the hook. They said, yeah, we have a contract now. We have a guaranteed medic coming if we're past our own medic. And I don't think that was the original intent.
And and the intent was that, that what we get to bill for.
Right.
If we did that, we bill for it.
But in essence, we just said you. Gonna say to somebody, we're five hundred bucks for us. Got somebody coming guaranteed. And so. Interesting.
So I'll go get your tongue to see.
I I I needed a Danbury medic yesterday on that seizure call. Our, both our medics were out, so I grabbed one from. You know, thirty-four, medic three or whatever. So we'll see if we get.
Well, I'm I'm curious.
I'm very curious.
Bill for third night. Well, this comes at a time of night, ladies and gentlemen, we're doing the person business to come before this mission. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We'll give Laura the second. All right, I'll try your minds all in favor, say aye. They opposed? Resentions? We're done. Time now, six oh seven PM. Thank you, everybody.